Good evening and welcome. Like to reconvene the 2012, March 12 Valley View School District Board Meeting. This evening we are joined by the award-winning ROTC Air Force Cadets from Bolingbrook High School to do the presentation of the flag. So if you, ladies and gentlemen, would rise and join them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you lady ROTC cadets.
Ladies.
Member Vinegas, affirmation of board education mission statement please.
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their life, long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students learning through a rigorous curriculum and a meaningful, effective instruction consequently demonstrating mastery of high-quality assessments with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Thank you, Mr. Vinegas. Dr. Mitchum, agenda approval.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the board to approve agenda revisions by moving up student-staff recognition items 7.1 through 7.13 on the agenda to begin before treasurer's report, item 5.1.
The motion would be... Second. Motion by Ms. Campbell, second by Mr. Bull, I believe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Reason we're moving the agenda up is so that all the people who are sitting on here that don't really need to be here except for student-staff recognition, you guys can go home and do your homework. So there you go. First in that order would then be...
Humphrey Middle School?
Humphrey, Pillars of Valley View? Or you want to do, yeah, let's just do the Pillars first?
Yeah.
Continue down the, yep, okay. Somebody forgot their pin. I'm not saying who, I'm just saying somebody forgot their pin.
It was me.
I'd like to introduce Dan Laverty, the principal of Humphrey Middle School.
Principal Laverty, please proceed.
Good evening, School Board. Dr. Mitchum, Senior Leadership. I'd like to introduce Jamie Lepore. She is a sixth-grade teacher at, a language arts teacher for us at Humphrey Middle School. She's been teaching for the past seven years at Humphrey. In addition, being a sixth-grade teacher, she dedicates her time outside the classroom as leader of our speech team, the literacy magazine, sixth-grade team leader, and a member of our secondary team. Her interest to be a teacher was inspired by a seventh-grade teacher that she had, Mr. Wilchin. She's grown, when she was growing up, he engaged students in a positive way which she has done with the staff and students at Humphrey. She graduated from SIU and recently completed her masters from Aurora University in educational Her master program inspired her to be a better educator, a leader in the classroom, and most important, learn how to help struggling students. Mrs. Lepore believes that her students can be successful, but walking in her classroom where students are always working for her to strive to do their very best because of her high expectations. It's an honor to know her and work with her each day. Because of Mrs. Lepore's dedication, I'd like to recognize her as a Valley View pillar of strength. Congratulations, Mrs. Lepore.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ted Warpinski, the principal of BJ Ward Elementary School.
Good evening, President Quigley, members of the board, senior leadership, and guests. Tonight, we are pleased to introduce Amy Paris as BJ Ward's pillar of Valley View. Mrs. Paris is one of our outstanding literacy leaders at BJ Ward who not only provides reading instruction and support to our students, she provides ongoing professional development to our teachers and staff. She is also responsible for assisting in our map scheduling, assists with data analysis, identifying key strategy that can be used in supporting our teachers and students based on our map strands. In addition, Mrs. Paris volunteers after school to tutor many of our students who need extra support and volunteers in the afternoon escorting our students to their buses and helping them, and helping us with safety. It is a pleasure to recognize Mrs. Paris as a pillar of Valley View.
We have her husband Doug here, her mom and dad, Samantha, Emily, Jonathan, and Zach, who all made it. Well, get in the picture. You still gotta go home and do your homework, though. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Campbell.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce to you tonight Ms. Stephanie Swastik. Ms. Swastik is a language arts teacher and language arts key leader at Humphrey Middle School. She was also the spelling bee coach for Humphrey, and she did an exceptional job because I'll give you a little preview, she is the coach of the county champ. She also took on the role this year of helping organize the spelling bee, and she did a phenomenal job with that, and I'm gonna allow her to introduce and recognize our Valley View winners as well as those students who were in the county bee. Ms. Swastik?
Okay, first place from Humphrey, Kimberly Belzer. Second place from Lucanzik, Elizabeth Zahoric. Third place from Brooks, Sharon Pally. Fourth place from Humphrey, Kristy Parsazek. Fifth place from Martinez, Jake Coward.
Well, Jake, don't look so excited to be here.
And lastly, sixth place from Jane Adams, Edward Awusu. And also Kimberly Belzer won the Will County Spelling Bee and will be going to Washington, DC to represent Will County in the National Spelling Bee. And Edward also competed in the spelling bee and, at the county bee, and received third place.
Mm-hmm. And parents, just so you know, if your child receives an award or whatever and you don't feel like you wanna stick around, feel free to hit the door. Moving down the list, varsity cheer, no, I'm sorry, ROTC. Gee, I wonder which one of those guys are.
Good evening. It's my pleasure, I'm Alec Anderson, Assistant Principal for Athletics and Activities at Bolingbrook High School. To introduce some of our winter award winners over the past several months. First, we'd like to recognize our junior ROTC Air Force squad, and first under the direction of Major Vince Braxtalis and Master Sergeant Tim Sanavi. And who's gonna speak tonight on behalf of the ROTC is Drill Team Commander Jenna Moran and Assistant Drill Team Commander Paige Hobbs.
Okay, so we just, we're finishing out our season. We had four meets over the past month or two, and at each meet, we placed first place out of four schools, and our championship had eight schools at it, and we also placed first at that. We have our BHS Raider Drill Meet coming up on the 25th, and we have a team composed of about 37 members, we have a varsity and a JV. And I'd like to take this time to thank our varsity drill team commanders, Najah Williams and Alexia Vergara, Lisette Zapata, Paige Hobbs, myself, Aiden Abel Beredo, and Ruby Beredo. Not only, you know, did they teach their own teams, their whole routine, they had to take a JV team that had no clue about drill and teach them everything. So I'd also like to thank our instructors for letting us stay after till all hours of the night to sit there and fix that one last thing that probably got us first place. And I wanna say good luck to our drill team on, on the next drill meet, the Raider Drill Meet. Also, we went this past weekend to Tecumseh High School, which is in Ohio. There's about 20 schools that compete there, and we took third overall. We also went to the Air Force Museum there. We took about 47 other cadets other than the drill team to go there to watch us compete and also learn a little about the Air Force Museum. We learned a lot about that in class, so going there to show them what we have been through and show them and have a big variety, people support us was also neat. We placed first in color guard, unarmed exhibition, armed exhibition, we took second place in inspection. Also, we have a knockout drill which consists of everyone that went to the drill meet that's in ROTC, and we had a couple cadets out of 400-something people take first place, third place, and ninth place, so it was pretty cool. And as a last note, we'd like to thank you all for having us here. It's a great honor.
It's our privilege. Look closely, folks, this is the future of United States military, right here. I wanna make... I'm gonna make an offer to your squad. I have a friend who's a two-star retired general that lives about 35 miles from here who would be happy to come and present anything you would like to talk about, about careers in the military to your class. And I also have a friend who's a lieutenant colonel who's a fighter pilot in Springfield who'd be happy to come up and address your class if you ever need somebody to come up and be a guest speaker. So just contact me or somebody at the office here, and we'll get those guys out here, and I'll buy them lunch. Not for all of them, just for the person I'm bringing in. Mr. Anderson.
Okay, next on our list, we have our varsity cheerleaders, who had another outstanding winter season. I'll bring up Coach Tammy North to tell you about her season.
Good evening, everyone. Varsity cheerleaders at Bolingbrook had a great season. We placed first at Bolingbrook Invitational and Lincoln Way Central Invitational, placing fourth in the Southwest Suburban Conference, winning the IHSA co-ed sectional title, first time in Bolingbrook history, placing second at the ICCA State Tournament. We also had two young ladies that were chosen for the ICCA All-State Cheerleading Squad, that was Ariel Smith and Angel Young. My team, Brandy Bakely, Cortrez Branigan, Jalen Burns, Christina Cabral, Caprice Chandler, Teresa Grizina, Courtney Merrill, Deja Mason, Courtney Morrison, Myra Roman, Kirsten Wink, and Makita Williams.
For those of you who don't know, they got second place because they ran up against a squad that had six tumblers that were all on the Jesse White tumbling team. We only have two tumblers, is that correct? I think two. Is that right?
Okay, we'll keep going with our head wrestling coach, Rob Kitske. We'll talk about two of our wrestlers who qualified for the state tournament this past
Isaac Jensen qualified at the 220-pound weight class. He was a conference champion. Unfortunately, he was not able to make it tonight, he had to work. But with us, we do have Rob Bain. He was another conference champion, he was a regional champion, he was a sectional champion, he was a state qualifier. Where at the state tournament, he made it all the way to the state championship match where he finished with second place in the state of Illinois in the heavyweight weight class, earning all-state honors. Rob is also a member of our football team that won the state championship, where he was also all-state. So this is his second sport in one year where he's earned all-state honors. He'll be attending University of Illinois on a football scholarship next fall.
It's a good thing he's wrestling heavyweight, 'cause doesn't look like he's missing any meals.
I think it's been tradition too for the superintendent to wrestle, anybody who's a state qualifier, best two out of three.
I heard what he did was head coach, so I'm good.
Moving down the list, Mr. Anderson, I think I know two or three of those girls.
I'm still up. Next, we're gonna celebrate some of our girl basketball players. First, we have Nia Moore, who was IBCA All-State selection. Nia will be attending the University of Illinois on a full basketball scholarship next year. And what's most impressive is she has a 4.6 GPA. And also joining her on the all-state team is Keira Ray, and Keira will be going to the University of Pennsylvania on a full basketball scholarship. And she has a 4.5 GPA. And she drives a real nice car that I saw tonight, she drives a really nice car. I'm very jealous of her car. And then finally, I think you know our last young lady, Morgan Tuck, and I've got a few things to say about her, but as she's going across the stage here, we'll tell you all about how we're accolade. She is the, our first-team all-state IBCA, she's all-state Champagne News Gazette, she is the Sun Times Player of the Year this year for girls' basketball, she's a Gatorade Illinois Player of the Year for girls' basketball, she is, was a finalist for the Naismith Award, which is the outstanding girls' basketball player in the country. She's a McDonald's All-American and a WCA All-American, she plays in an all-state game out in Denver, I believe, later on this month. When she was a freshman, she was Miss Basketball, the first freshman ever to win that award in the history of Illinois. She was the national freshman of the year according to ESPN Rise, and in 2010, she was the national sophomore player of the year for ESPN Rise. She's been a Parade All-American for three years in a row, they haven't announced the, this year's All-American team yet for Parade, but we feel she'll be on it again. She played for the USA Basketball U-16, U-17, and U-19 teams and was part of two world championships and was able to travel around the world, and she will be attending UConn next year on a basketball scholarship. And I know their teammates aren't here tonight, but they'd be, these three would be the first to tell, we've had a great run over the last several years thanks to this senior class we've had at Bolingbrook High School. But the best thing about this group is not only are they talented, but they're very humble, very grouped, they're, I mean, I get a lot of calls from other schools just complimenting how well behaved our kids are, they say please, they say thank you, and they're very gracious in victories, they've had a lot of those over the last four years, but they're never cocky about it, never arrogant, and so we'll miss them a great deal, but we're gonna have some great luck in the next, in the next chapter of life. So congratulations, ladies.
Good job, ladies. For those of you who don't know, at the last meeting, we all cut out early so we could go watch them play, and it didn't quite work out as well as we hoped. I feel like we got jobbed, but four overtimes, four overtimes to be the repeat, repeat, repeat state champions, and they lost by a handful of points, and again, I think we got jobbed at the end of the game, but a nicer group of young ladies you will not meet. If any of you have daughters and you're looking for role models, those young ladies, all of them that are on that team, are the ones that you want to pat on your children after because they are unbelievably just, just kind and patient with, when they talk to little kids that they don't even know, and let alone how they handle the press and how they carry themselves. The grades speak for themselves, eight scholarship players in Division One schools around the country, the best, some of the best colleges in the country, not only just best basketball colleges, best colleges in the country, coming right out of here, coming out of this basketball program. Coach Smith should be, should be congratulated and patted on the back, he's not here this evening, but an outstanding representation of our school district and our school, and Alec, I know you're gonna be, you'll be missing them, but hopefully, they'll grind some other ones up, make them taller, and bring them back next year. We got, 'cause we got an extra grind with...
Whitney Young.
Whitney Young, there you go.
And Coach Smith doesn't regret, but he's actually at home with strep throat tonight, so he didn't want him to bring his germs with him, so...
And that's a good thing.
Yes, it is. Next on our list is Coach Donna Franks Tapley. We'll talk about our speech qualifier who went downstate, so Donna?
It's just like a speech coach, not to have prepared a speech, but I'll go ahead and speak about Heather Afriay. I wanna introduce her, and then I'll talk about all the fabulous things she's done. Heather was, Heather came to me her sophomore year, and as most sophomores do, they find out that they should've joined speech their freshman year, and they hate that they didn't. The first year Heather was on our team, she made it to state as a novice in dramatic duet acting, so two years ago, we were here celebrating her and Stefiana Wyatt. Today, we're celebrating her, and I just wanna do just a quick rundown of what her season was like, just very quickly. When we go to tournaments, there's typically over 20 teams at our tournaments, 20, 35, some teams, sometimes. And oratorical declamation, which was a speech that is delivered, or written by another person that is, Heather delivered as if it was her own, so she has to be convincing and well-spoken and emotional, and have all of the personality of the original speaker. So in declamation, out of the 13 tournaments invites that we went to, Heather won first place in five of those tournaments, third place in three of them, and then fifth place in another, so just her preseason record was amazing. She went on and advanced from regionals to sectionals, and she had left regionals as first-place tournament champion in both declamation and dramatic and TERP, which was amazing, to be double tournament champions out of regionals into sectionals, and she finished fourth, third, going downstate and competing in declamation, and finished overall, seventh place. I just can't say enough about her. She was one of those students that I just needed to get the right speech in her hands. She's amazing to work with, and I hate to lose her, but congratulations, you had an
And our last award for Bolingbrook High School this evening will be presented by Deborah Taylor, who was, we had a state culinary arts finalist, so Deborah.
Hi, I'm not sure if she's here, but I'd like to recognize Leah Romer. She competed in the culinary competition, there was 20 different schools there, 50 students, and she scored within the top nine. She's going down to state where she will compete on April 2nd, and supported by her other teammates. When they go to the competition, they actually are split up from their teammates and they compete with other students from other schools, and she actually became, they called her the little firecracker. She did really well, and she was, so we're looking forward to going to state on April 2nd, and I don't see her, so that's Leah Romer.
See, culinary arts is more in my alley, you can eat the food as you cook it and prepare it, so it goes pretty well. But that's it for Bolingbrook High School, thank you for your support.
Mr. Kinder.
Good evening, President Quigley, members of the board, Dr. Mitchum, senior leadership, audience members, and community members. This evening, I have some unfortunate news about our bowling team. Our head coach, Tony Tally's mother passed away on Friday, and the services were today as a tight-knit bunch, all of them are there being with their coach, and two other of their members are also affected by family members of the head coach for this evening. But we do have our assistant coach, Coach Mike Kay, that will tell you a little bit about the season, and give him the recognition, I'm sure he'll pass it on to our players and as well as Coach Tally, as our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family now as well. as our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family now as well. Coach Kay?
Thank you, Mr. Kinder. Good evening. Our season, we finished ninth in state last year, so we were looking for a repeat. We got second in conference. We had three all-conference members, which in bowling is all based on scores. So we had Brandon Lesec Tally, Will Thompson, and Dakota Vash. We were all SBC members this year. We went to sectionals. Just like last year, we were way behind going into the last game. Last year was a little bit tougher. This year, we had to jump two teams in 75 pins. We bowled a really good last game. The other teams fell off a little bit. We ended up qualifying for state for the second straight year. First day at state, it's a two-day tournament. One of our bowlers, Corey McReady, had a 290 game in game three, which led him... He had the state lead after day one. He had an up-and-down day, day two, but he ended up finishing 11th in state at the state tournament with a 220 average, so he got All-State honors. Other members of our team that helped out were Jacob Young and Anthony Gladstone and Kyle Zeremba. Those are our main varsity guys. Well, we're looking at making another run next year. We're only losing two seniors, so hopefully we'll be back next year. Next year, hopefully we'll get that SBC title as well. We felt just a little bit short this year. But fifth place in state, last year ninth, you know, four more up, we'll take the state title home with us next year. So thank you again.
Bring it home. So 290. So that's a spare in the first frame and then striking out, right? Wow, hate that something.
Next, I'm going to introduce Mr. Clark Anderson, one of our band directors at Romeoville High School, to introduce our very spirited All-State pep band. Mr. Anderson?
Good evening. Our All-State pep band is made up of our best 16 musicians, and definitely are very spirited. We've played at all of our home basketball games over the last several years, and we've auditioned to be an All-State pep band several times over the last six years. We were able to do it three years ago, and we were able to be selected again this year. It's kind of a three-step process. In November, through recommendations, we're able to send in an audition tape. So we go through and kind of use the band room as a studio to record the pep band playing bits and pieces of about 30 tunes. And then we send the CD to the state office, and at the end of January, the state IHSA officials, they listen to all the recordings from all of the pep bands that are applying, and then they get selected and assigned to either finals or semifinals for both the boys and girls tournaments. Tonight, we brought some of our seniors with that have been All-State musicians for two years ago when we made it and also this year. We have Joshua Demore. Chris Garcia. Kail Higgins. Austin Janet. Rich Jet. Taylor King. Colin Langer. Gabriel Nikeme. Holly Polis. Alm Santrund. And Amy Zeta. And those are the senior members of our 2012 All-State pep band. Thank you.
You can tell the piano player wasn't here because they always have that tie with the piano keys on it. Mr. Shafline? After we get the group photo?
Good evening. Yes, I'm Chris Shafline, Principal Jane Adams Middle School, and I'm happy to introduce our boys' basketball coach, Mr. Josh Gage, to talk about our state team and eighth-grade players. First, thank you for having us. This is our fifth year in a row for Jane Adams to go to state at one level or the other. This particular group is fairly special. They finished second in the state as seventh graders, and they returned as eighth graders, the majority of them. And we were able to fight through a season that was a little bit more difficult than they were prepared for. And they earned second in the state as well. So it's two years in a row. They're a fantastic group of athletes. They're better human beings at this point than they are athletes. So they matured quite a bit from sixth grade to eighth grade, and it's a very proud moment tonight. So I have quite a few of them. Antoine Locke. Devon Sams. Alex West. Tough Forland. Frishon Isim. Trey Max. And Terrence Williams. Coach Floger, come on now.
I believe I skipped over Humphrey. The last... I went from 10 to 12. Sorry. Thank you, gentlemen.
We were here to recognize Sally Davidak. She was a two-time state champion. She earned two gold medals in the Special Olympics Winter Games in snow shoeing in the 50-meter and 100-meter on a competition on February 4th. I believe she's not here tonight, but she won two gold medals for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to her. Next, Brooks Middle School.
Good evening, President Quigley, members of the board, Dr. Mitchum, senior leadership. It gives me great pleasure to call forth two individuals who've spent countless hours in preparation, working with our varsity cheerleading squad, working mornings, nights, weekends to get them prepared. Molly Desurf and Angie McDonald, please come forth.
We want to thank you for having us here to recognize the girls. They, just past January, competed in the ISA State Competition, where it was a rough road getting to. It was the blizzard, so we were not going to be able to go. We ended up being able to leave early in the morning and get there. We got on the bus thinking that we had just gotten honorable mention, and Ms. McDonald rechecked the scores, and we saw that we actually received eighth place. So it was all their hard work that these girls put in and their dedication to what they were doing that got them that title. So we take... With us in recognizing them, Janelle Bell. Niani Scott. Regina Ward. Kiara Martin. Nikia Smith. A.J. Niang. Kayla Smith. And Jasmine Owen.
After one more photograph, we'll be moving down the agenda. Good night, ladies. Thank you very much. All right, as the room clears out, we are now at liaison reports after 13 student and staff recognition. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going back up the agenda to 4.1. 5.1, treasurer's report. Mr. Grazafi, please. And you know my question, so you might as well just fill it in at the end.
All right, I will do that. Treasurer's action report 5.1 is prepared by our treasurer, Joanne Borg, for the month of February, contains our financial reports, our balance sheets, summary of revenues, expenditures, and encumbrances, as well as interim obligation payments for February 2012 totaling $3,488,729.54 for your consideration in action this evening.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowe?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
5.2. 5.2 is the schedule of bills for the month of March 2012 totaling $2,67,262.55 for your consideration in action as well.
So move.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Ms. Campbell, Mr. Curran, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowe?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Information reports 5.3, summary of investments, 5.4, state funding update, and 5.5 are your trust fund activity reports. The state funding update, as we sit today, $4,342,000 is owed to Valley View, about 3.6 of which are categorical payments due as far back as December. So we continue to monitor those closely. Not a whole lot of change. I think we've added a state lunch payment that's due, as well as a... They're also behind in early childhood funding, $84,000. So again, not as bad as it's been in the past, but we're not seeing a whole lot of improvement either.
Typically, this time of the year, it's going to start getting slower and slower as the state runs out of funding. Is that correct?
As we approach June, end of the fiscal, that is correct.
And then that usually, that 4.3 is kind of creeped up into seven to eight?
It will. When we end our fiscal year, close our books, we could be two categoricals behind, which approaches $8 million. We'll go through August to allow ourselves to book probably one categorical payment. The state gave itself three additional months through December to clear its books, but we'll end the year when I present the summary of expenditures and revenue fund balance report. I'll show that we are behind one categorical payment as I did for this current budget year.
Did they ever make up for the year from a year ago than they said they were going to?
Yeah, basically, all the funding, we're all caught up except for what you see here.
Okay, because that was another $4 million or something too, I think, wasn't it?
They just keep replacing existing funds with old funds, so we just keep rolling it forward.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the board to approve consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.4, board meeting minutes, executive session meeting minutes, gifts for BJ Ward Elementary School and Romeoville High School, and trips for Bullenbrook High School.
Motion would be in order.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vinegas, second by Ms. Hanson, I believe. Roll call vote.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowe?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Now we're back to liaison reports. Any and all? I got one. The state of Illinois is talking about taking their section of the pensions that they pay into the teachers and affiliated members onto the local government bodies, meaning school districts in this case. Our school district, if they so choose to do that, the 6% that they kick in, I believe it's 6%, is that correct?
I think it'd be closer to 7.5, 7.6 is what I'm reading, yes.
That will cost Valley View School District $25 million. So chew on that because $25 million coming out of local tax coffers, coming out of local educational funds. And for those of you here tonight who make a living as a teacher, you might want to pass that along to your friends in Springfield who support... You support their campaigns, and $25 million is a lot of teachers. It's just one district. $25 million to Valley View School District. I don't care if they phase it in over two years, or five years, or three years, whatever they're coming up with. If they phase in $25 million over three years, it's $8 million that we have to find. It ain't out there, folks. I'm just saying it right now. It ain't out there. Or to be grammatically correct, it's not out there. So think about it. When you go to your... The teachers have meetings and so on and so forth. You better start talking to the folks in Springfield. They represent you. We have a brand-new state senator named Pat McGuire. Call him up. Representative Casey used to be a teacher. Call her up. Let her know your displeasure with the idea that they're throwing this back on local governments. It's billions of dollars that the state is dumping back on the backs of local government. Period, end of story. That's it. That's all it is. They're dumping it on the backs of local taxpayers. They've got problems. They created them. Now they're taking their problem and making it your problem and our problem. That's my rant for the day. Any other liaison reports? Hearing none, seeing none, moving down the agenda. Student due process.
Mr. President, I ask the board to approve these items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Curran, second by Ms. Hanson. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowe?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Action reports. Ms. Kinder?
Good evening, President Quigley, members of the board. Tonight, I bring to you action report 10.1, which is seeking your approval for high school summer school programming. This includes the traditional high school summer school program, including the driver's ed program and the Phoenix Experience Summer Online Program. Details of staffing, tuition, and budget information were outlined to you in the information report presented at last board meeting, and I bring this tonight for your approval.
So move.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Ms. Campbell, Mr. Vinegas. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. I just think it's a great idea. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowe?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Grazafi, all-day kindergarten contract.
11.1, action report is a proposal for architectural and engineering services for our district-wide all-day kindergarten expansion project. Proposal covers 65% of the services associated with the design, documentation, and bidding of the project. The second part of this proposal will be included in the construction contract for the additions and renovations, and those services there would be covered... Would include construction administration for all of the architectural and engineering services. At this time, I am recommending that this proposal be accepted. Approximate expected cost for the proposal, $650,000 with White &amp; Company.
So move.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? So this is for them to look at, engineer, put out bids, or construct?
All of the above, except construct. This is for the design and development, planning and implementation, drawings, and bidding documentation.
With bathrooms in the classrooms.
Alternates.
Any other discussion? You got to design it before you can build it. So hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowe?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Action report 11.2. In November of 2010, the village of Romeoville had requested our support for an extension of the Marquette Tax Increment Finance District, also known as a TIF district, which had an expiration date scheduled for 2012. They were asking for a 12-year extension, which would take it out to 2024. The TIF was, again, established back in 1989. The extension request required and received the necessary legislative approval. And the reason the extension was being requested was that... the reason the extension was being requested was that in response to a weak economy, the village felt that valuation stability in the TIF corridor and surrounding properties was the primary objective in order to continue to build property values within the TIF district. Job retention and expansion is directly tied to stabilizing the property values. At that time, the village had proposed some shared benefits. When they asked for and received our approval for the expansion, or our support, rather, those benefits are formally conveyed and outlined in the attached intergovernmental agreement. The main benefits include RC Hill building and site improvements valued at $1 million. These improvements will tie together the downtown architecture and help with traffic flow in and around RC Hill, including a new bus drop-off. Transportation land repayment forgiveness valued at $250,000. The district had received $750,000 to help relocate the bus barn from the 135th Street location to its current location. The loan was to be repaid over a five-year period with $125,000 per year annual payments, and this forgiveness represents the final two years of payments. And the third benefit with the approval of the IGA is the transportation center parking area improvements valued at $250,000. These funds can and will be used to create additional staff parking when the Spartan Square Shopping Plaza is revitalized, as part of the overall downtown redevelopment plan that the village has in place. Currently, we are using that area for staff overflow parking, where we're shuttling those employees to and from that area. And so with the outline of those benefits and the support that we gave the village back in November, excuse me, I would recommend approval of the intergovernmental agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion by, I don't know, if you guys can fight it out. Second has been made. Is there any discussion? These things have been vetted out pretty good in Springfield, that's why they get, they have to have legislative approval before we can take action. They don't pass a ton of TIFs every year, and an extension on a TIF is scrutinized just about the same amount as a new TIF. So happy to help the village, and that helps us in this particular case. So roll call vote, if there's no further discussion.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Final action report for me this evening, 11.3, is another intergovernmental agreement for ball field netting for the Fountaindale Library at the Brooks Middle School baseball field. They approved this intergovernmental agreement back in the February 16, 2012 meeting of the library, and this will allow them to install and maintain netting and poles to support netting, to mitigate any foul balls from the Brooks baseball field onto the library's property. Some time ago, we conveyed some property, sold some property, to the Fountaindale Library to allow expanded parking over there. We made clear that at the time that that sale occurred, that we were, can continue to have ball games, baseball games, on that field, and they went into it with both eyes open, fully realizing that that could and might occur. And so lo and behold, the parking opens, the cars park, and we have some damaged automobiles in the lot. And so they are trying to take some prudent measures, if you will, to allow, to, again, mitigate those foul balls from damaging the vehicles there. We do require an intergovernmental agreement, per the attorneys, and the only exposure that we would have, if you will, is that we agreed to share the cost of netting in 10 years' time, which would occur in the 2022 year. Anticipated cost about $700. And so we felt that that was, that was fair, since we are indeed causing the damage, even though they knew full well that that could occur.
How much does it cost in 10 years?
It's a $1,400, 50-50 replacement, right.
They don't have fish still hanging on those nets, do they?
It's worth the home runs.
That's right. That's right.
Of course, you know, it's the Brooks ball players, they hit the ball straight. It's the other teams that are hitting the foul balls. The issue, for those of you who have been by there, when they asked for the expanded parking lot, I looked how close that was, walked it off, actually, and I said, hmm, that's about 15 feet. So if they want it, they got it. That will be built to our specifications, correct?
Correct. Building and grounds has thoroughly vetted the proposal in terms of what's being installed. They agreed to maintain, maintain it in the future years, other than the replacement netting, which we feel is going to, at least a 10-year lifespan. So it is a good industrial strength installation.
It would be my advice, if you value the windshield, to park on the east side of the lot until the nets put up.
So moved.
Second. Motion seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Ms. Hawks, action reports.
Thank you, President Quigley. Action report 12.1, consolidated action report for certified and classified personnel. This evening, we're asking your approval on 22 items for certified personnel, 15 items for classified personnel, and three items for classified administrative personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Motion by Mr. Vinegas, second by Ms. Hanson. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Second action report, 12.2, resolution number 1302, authorizing dismissal of educational support personnel employee for reasons other than reduction of force for your approval this evening.
So moved.
Second. Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Final action report tonight is 12.3, resolution number 1303, authorizing nonrenewal of administrator contract and reassignment to teaching position.
Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
President Quigley?
No. Motion carries. Next. Mr. Mitchum, information reports.
None.
Thank you for being brief, as I'm sure Mr. Alpern will be, perhaps. None. AFT reports. Valley View Council report. Valley View Office Personnel report. No report. Any old business before the board this evening? Any new business before the board this evening? Ms. Williams, you look like you want to say something. No?
No.
Any questions from the public on action we have taken this evening?
We have some here.
Please. State your name and where you're from.
I'm in San Diego.
No, whoa, whoa, you gotta talk into the microphone, this is a public meeting.
I'm in San Diego, local one representative.
Okay.
And she is working for GCA. She works in Romeo Ville High School.
Okay. Please state your name and where you're from. You gotta flip the thing up so she can stand up to the microphone. There's a thing at the bottom. There, you let it pull down.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Maria Damian. Llevo 17 años trabajando para el distrito Valley View. Mis colegas y yo trabajamos muy duro diariamente para mantener las escuelas de Valley View limpias y sanitarias de manera que nuestros estudiantes puedan disfrutar de una atmósfera de aprendizaje segura y limpia. No tenemos días feriados ni días por enfermedad, ni días de vacaciones con paga, ni tampoco tenemos seguro médico, y no tenemos ningún tipo de seguridad para nuestra futura jubilación. Como trabajadores en este distrito escolar y miembros de esta comunidad, estamos aquí en esta noche para pedirles que no nos recorten nuestro salario. Yo soy madre soltera, soy responsable de pagar las cuentas y la hipoteca de mi familia. Los costos suben continuamente y a veces enfrento grandes dificultades para poder cubrir mis gastos. Si mi salario sufre un recorte de un dólar por hora según la propuesta, el propuesto, mi familia sufrirá, eso significa unos $176 al mes que no tendremos para pagar cuentas y comprar comida, lo que significa más de $2,121 por año. Este recorte de salario nos perjudicará no solo para el año entrante, sino para los próximos tres años y más allá. Los recortes de salario no solo perjudicarán a mi familia y a las familias de mis colegas, sino que perjudicarán a toda nuestra comunidad. Somos miembros de esta comunidad escolar, les pedimos que nos traten con dignidad, respeto, y en nuestro trabajo tengan la bondad y garantizar que no haya el potencial de recortes de salarios en contrato de limpieza. Gracias. Por favor, no me recorten un dólar de mi salario porque yo soy madre soltera. Gracias.
Una pregunta, por favor. ¿Su nombre y dónde vive?
María Damian. Vivo en Yoliet, y llevo 17 años limpiándoles la high school de Romeo Ville.
Thank you, ladies. Anybody else who would like to address the board this evening? Any questions? Oh, pastor, come on up. Very good. And yourself? Always a pleasure to see you. Go ahead, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Calvin Quarles. I'm the pastor of the Bolingbrook Community Church. I just wanted to take a moment, first of all, to commend the board and the district for, I think, the effort you've been making over the past school year, just to raise the bar in our district and to certainly bring about the changes and improvement. I think changes are always going to be a challenge, and I'm just glad to see that the district is up for that challenge. Do have a concern that I want to just begin to maybe address, and actually hope that you can help me to address this. Concerned about what I think is an injustice, and so when I talk about injustice, it really is something that, when I look at it, and maybe the board has already addressed it, and I just want to, maybe I've missed it. But somewhere along the line, when I look at what happened with the IHSA and their changing of the finals and the tournament for our girls' basketball, I think that something needs to be said and done. And I don't know what the, what approach needs to be taken to addressing that change and what needs to be said about it, but I think at some point in time, my point was, I'm going to take it to the school board. They're our representatives, they're the ones I think need to file a formal complaint with the Illinois High School Association to bring about a change in that decision. So as far as I'm concerned, I think we all know that the things that have happened here over the last two years, the changes that they made, directly impacted this specific school district. I think we need to say something about it. I don't think we should just let it pass by. Maybe you've already done that, and I missed it. But if that's not happened, I'd like to see it actually take place, and that's why I'm here on today.
I'm happy to help you write that letter.
Well, I would certainly like to do that.
One would think, and I'm not going to get into a quarrel with the ISHA about their athletics, but one would think that you would want the two best teams in the state to face off in the championship game. Might make me want to watch TV a little more on a late Saturday night, but I'm not the person at the ISHA. So if you want your super sectional champion to be your state champion...
It only makes sense to me. Well, I think...
Couldn't agree with you more.
And if, whatever assistance I can get in doing that, and if I can assist you in doing it, if we need to raise a little...
Oh, we got a couple guys that work at our schools that know a little bit more about the ISHA than you and I.
I certainly would appreciate that.
I also, while we're grinding that ax, shall we say, I find it absolutely abhorrent that they charge $10 for students to go to the state championship game. I was standing next to a gentleman who was probably in his early 30s, who had three children under the age of 10, I'm guessing, just by height, and his wife, and this was last year down in Bloomington. He was out 50 bucks to walk in the front door. He did not look like the kind of gentleman who could afford more than, much more than 50 bucks. Maybe I'm wrong, I don't want to be judgmental. But the point is, you want students at state high school championship things right?
Absolutely.
Why not charge them 5 bucks?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know a whole lot about that.
For the students, the parents, okay, I get it a little bit, but for the students, it's ridiculous. I don't know what they charge at some of the other athletic endeavors, but I'm sure it's probably comparable. And I understand the ISHA has costs that they have to recover, but they also have TV contracts, and they have other advertising methodologies that they can get.
President Quigley, just so I can, I'll finish, you know, in terms of my statement. I think I'm prepared to write a letter to address the IHSA in whatever way it needs to be done. I think it's something that needs to be addressed, you know, quickly, before we get into the next school year or next season or what have you. But I truly think that having this board support and them making a statement in reference to it is really what needs to happen. I don't think we ought to just allow them to make that decision without it being addressed. So that's where I stand, and that's what I came here today to make.
Thank you. Pitchforks, scissors, and torches, I'm ready to go.
All right. Well, thank you very much, I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate your, and we will get, hey, let's get the ministers involved.
Well, we need the help from...
Absolutely. I appreciate that, thank you very much. Anyone else this evening? Please state your name and where you're from.
My name is Kelly Barash, and I work at Woodview, and I'm also a Valley View parent. You're talking about the kindergarten, remodeling, addition and all that. My concern, it sounds silly, but the bathrooms. Kindergartners need to go to the bathroom, and I've seen some of the plans of where my classroom will be to where the hallway bathroom is, and I've heard you say before that you would like all the kindergarten classrooms to be equitable. What's in one is in the other kindergarten classroom in another building, but if it's already a newer classroom that already has a bathroom in it, but mine doesn't have a bathroom, and I know it comes down to cost, I get that, I get that, but they're kindergarten. They're, I would love you, any board member could come into my classroom and see how often they go during the day. It's necessary, and if we go all day, that's a lot of time out of the classroom of going, you know, taking a whole class, you know, to the hallway. So I'm just asking the board to reconsider the, I know it's in the plans, a little room, whether it's a storage room or one-on-run room, you know, for extra help or something, but that does, doesn't seem logical to work with students in a little room when there's a whole big classroom. So I'm just asking the board to reconsider. I know it comes down to money. I've built, you know, two different houses in Romeo Ville, I know everything comes down to money and budget and so, but I'm just asking the board to reconsider as a kindergarten teacher of eight years in the district and a Valley View parent of two children, so.
So noted, and we will look at those plans again, just because I kind of have the same feeling that you have, but...
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And I don't think any of the drawings are final. We're not in construction document phase anyway, correct, Gary?
No, we are actually out with construction documents. Ideally, when we held the first planning meetings, we wanted to put bathrooms in all the new classrooms, and it was a budgetary issue. We are bidding them as alternates, and we're certainly keeping our fingers crossed that if the bids come in, to where we hope they will, we can, we can look to add those bathrooms back into those little, those little planning rooms there.
And I believe one meeting, I don't recall who it was, it said that they would rather spend the money now than in two years, say, ooh, we really should have done that. So...
That might have been me.
Yeah, like I said, anybody's welcome to come to my kindergarten classroom and see how often we use it, you know, so, so, just a reconsideration.
Thanks much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything else for the board this evening? Hearing none, seeing none. Any board members with announcements? I got a couple. Educational Enrichment Foundation, We Got Talent, or whatever it's called. What is it called? Anyone? VVSD, We Have Talent? That's correct. Friday night, Bolingbrook Golf Club, 6 o'clock?
6:30.
6:30, yeah. 6:30, and I think it's, what, 40 bucks?
50 bucks.
50 bucks.
60 at the door.
Oh, and you can pay at the door, and it all goes to the Enrichment Foundation. They've raised close to $2 million the past few years, or 10 years, 15 years, how long it's been going on. Need more, and they have millions of dollars worth of requests every couple of years. So, community help would be fantastic. I don't know if it's sold out. Probably not. There's always a few tickets available for those who want to come in. Lions Club, for those of you of Irish heritage, Kedmee Slanshah, or Kedmee Falshah, like, actually, Lions Club is having their St. Patrick's Day celebration on the 17th at the Levy Center, and I believe that starts at 6 o'clock. You can pay at the door, you can have corned beef and cabbage. For a small fee, you can have green beer, I think. So, anybody who would like to, and it is a family thing, it's not just a beer swill. It's a, actually, a good time, it's a family event. And the chef, Craig O'Brien, imagine that, from Quantum Foods, usually cooks the corned beef, so he knows what he's doing. I have nothing else. Anyone else?
President Quigley, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams does have a plug for tonight. Summer learning experience, just wanted to say to all parents, Summer Learning Experience Program registration has been extended to April 30. Payment plans are available, so we want all parents to come out, register your child grades K through 5. Thank you.
How many people are in the, currently enrolled in the summer program?
We have approximately 134 students at this time.
Excellent. And we're expecting several hundred from the response.
We are anticipating between 750 students and 1,300. Magic number is 1,300.
Till April 30. And we might be able to push that back a little further, if you're a little late in getting the paperwork in, but make it easier on staff, do it that way. Ms. Hanson, I believe you had something.
I was just gonna announce the BHS musical also begins this Friday. A funny thing happened on the way to the forum.
And that is at what time?
Seven.
At BHS, and tickets are?
$10 at the door, $8 on, on the web.
Uh-huh.
And RHS is musical. I wasn't sure, I think it's the same day.
The following Friday.
They're the following Friday, March 23.
March 23 for the RHS musical, which is?
Into the Woods.
Into the Woods.
It's a great, Into the Woods is a great performance.
All of this is available on the Valley View website. Thank you, Mr. Randa.
Yeah, and the reason I brought that up is my son is also starring in the show.
But of course.
It's our last show.
Anything else for the good of the order? Looks like spring is here. Kids are gonna be out on bicycles, a lot more than they were. We didn't have much of a winter. Kindly be careful. We don't want the kids getting run over by cars, because kids are kids, and you're drivers, not them, so. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Slow move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Campbell, second by Mr. Venegas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, the ayes have it, we stand adjourned. Have a great evening.